Thanks for waiting just a couple of minutes while we got some of our stuff situated here. So, we'll go ahead and, well, we don't really have to, we'll call the meeting to order. So, tonight we are discussing the school-based healthcare center. There's currently one at Central High School and there's the proposed one at the new Grand Junction High School. So, with this meeting, we, since it's been a few years since the pre, well, the previous board had this conversation, wanted to have this board be brought up to speed with those conversations and be able to ask questions, bring the community along in this discussion. Obviously, prior to this board, there's obviously been a lot of things that have happened locally and nationally. So, it's just, I think prudent to come back and have this conversation, you know, pros and cons. So, that's the purpose of tonight. I know we have some information that we've brought together from the previous intake or, excuse me, needs analysis that was done prior 2017, 2018? And is that when? Okay, okay, in 2018, yeah. And so, we'll bring all that information together. So, there's not going to be any public comment tonight. That does not mean that if you need to catch one of us afterwards or send an email with any other thoughts or questions that anybody has, please do. There will be public comment at the business meeting next Tuesday. So, if you want to, you know, formulate anything, I know we've received a handful of emails today. And so, I do have some of those questions that were proposed in some of the emails that we received that we could look at addressing. And so, really, this is for the, the public to just listen to the board, you know, hashing out this conversation. And so, instead of our, I know our board meetings go long, we opted that we would offer a special meeting to discuss this particular topic with each other and obviously have the community here as well. So, if, any particular, I don't know if we want to start looking back. Maybe we should just look back at what was presented in 2018 with the needs analysis. From our last conversation on our workshop, it was proposed that we potentially have Merillac or the community do another needs analysis, but then after further thought, we're not sure whether that's a good use of time and money. Because really, the needs analysis is there for the students that is, that's already been done and they did all the focus groups and all that information. We may end up just replicating information we already have. Really, what this is about is bringing the community along to see what the community feels around having the health clinic in Grand Junction High School. And I think also clarifying questions or concerns, you know, whether for or against that, that we've had expressed to us from the community. So, so we're, we're going to hash through some of those tonight. I encourage every board member to please, please express this. This is, I want this to be a good, healthy discussion between all of us and, you know, kind of what we're hearing from people and bring up different, you know, questions or thoughts. And so, I just want to engage the entire board in, in the discussion. So, do you want to, oh, you have some stuff up? Okay, perfect.
If this is what the board wants us to go through, this is, I, I sent this to everybody in December. It's the presentation that was given, it looks like it was actually January 2019. So, the folks that were giving the presentation at the time, some of our staff members are, they're retired and so, they're not around anymore. So, we can go through all the slides if you want and review it or whatever the board would prefer. You think that's good? Okay.
I think let's look at this information, making sure that all board members are, you know, again, on the same page with the same information. We can stop at any point if board members want to, you know, ask a question. I know Merillac is here if they need to ask question or answer any questions. And we also have facilities here because if we're looking at making the change of what's on the plan, so, you know, that the board could understand or get some information on what that may look like. So, we do have some people here that could potentially answer some other questions for us as well.
So, I will try to recreate the presentation from like four years ago, but.
The thing about this though, it gives us all kind of a baseline grounding and so, we have defined terms. So, when someone says something, we can all know that's what that means. Instead of just making some assumptions. So, I, I think to go through that is, this is good.
So, this first slide is really just a definition of what a school-based health center is. So, a school-based health center is a healthcare facility located inside a school or on school grounds, staffed by multi, multidisciplinary team of medical and behavioral health providers, sometimes dental professionals, health educators and health insurance enrollment specials, specialists. And the purpose is to improve health and education outcomes. So, who has served? Students who have barriers or challenges to accessing care or is limited. Services are designed to identify problems early, provide continuity of care and improve academic participation. And also, just kind of a side note, I know there were some questions from the board about whether or not the, the current one we have at Central serves the community and it's, that is not open to the community. So, the one at Central High School is just for the students at the school. And I believe if we were to move forward with the one at Junction, it would just be for students within the building. So, there, those are not open to the community. I think there are some school-based, actually, I know there's some school-based health centers in other places that are open to the community, but ours currently isn't. So, this slide, it was a difference, well, the logo's covering it up, but there was a difference between what a school-based health center can do and what a school nurse can do. So, I won't read all those, but you can see them there on the screen. Okay, I'll go, I think you go if I move on, okay? So, the outcomes for school-based health centers, increased immunization rates, decreased use of emergency rooms, improved screening and identification of students at risk for depression and/or anxiety, improved screening and early intervention to address risky substance use, decreased teen pregnancy, improved identification and screening of overweight slash obese students and improved educational outcomes for better school performance, grade promotion and high school completion. Those would be the goals for having the school-based health center. So, back when there was a committee that was put together in, I believe, 2018, these were the members that were on that community, so, or committee. So, it was some D-51 staff and then representatives from different entities throughout the community. So, you can see the names there. So, the objectives of the needs assessment that was done, and my understanding is this, the needs assessment took, I can't remember, it was four to five months to complete. And I, this presentation will go through kind of what they did during the needs assessment. But, the goals were to understand the healthcare needs of students in the target areas of Mesa County Valley School District 51, assess the potential utilization of a school-based health center and then understand existing community resources, including healthcare facilities that serve low-income children and youth and identify barriers to, to students receiving services. So, they had, student, parent and staff surveys were conducted and it looks like they had about 1,300 respondents to that. There were also focus groups that were conducted, 55 participants in six different focus groups, community partner interviews with four different organizations. And then, they used existing data for health and socioeconomic indicators. And then, you can see the target population over here to the side. The analysis focused on students enrolled at Central, Grand Junction High School and their feeder middle schools. The CHI, the Colorado Health Institute, found that both high schools met key indicators that project the need for a school-based health center. Those were health outcomes, access and utilization of care, health insurance coverage and youth risk factors. So, you can see the respondents by stakeholder group, student survey respondents representative of the district's student population and race and ethnicity and gender, Spanish-speaking parents, male parents, central high school parents, and central high school parents are underrepresented in the survey. So, mental health was the most critical student health concern. The top five student health concerns for students, you can see them on the screen, feeling worried or stressed, feeling sad, eating and weight issues, suicide or wanting to hurt themselves, alcohol or drug use. For parents, feeling worried or stressed, violence and bullying, feeling sad, not enough exercise and eating and weight issues. And then, for staff, it was anxiety and stress, alcohol or drug use, problems at home, coming to school hungry and eating and weight issues. Top five health complaints or chronic conditions that affect students' attendance and academic achievement. So, emotional issues were the number one, sore throat, colds, fever, earaches and coughing, behavior issues, stomach aches and headaches. So, health insurance coverage for the county. So, at that time, D-51 ranked 80th out of 178 school districts for percentage of school-aged children in poverty. The percentage of school-aged children living in poverty in District 51 is higher than the statewide average. Mesa County has a higher percentage of uninsured children than the state, I believe that's what say. The percentage of children enrolled in Medicaid is higher than the statewide average and the percentage of children eligible for CHIP+ is double the state average, leaving an estimated 2,243 children who are eligible but not enrolled. You can see the statistics on there for the, or the county versus the state. Access to care, so most parents and students report that they, youth have seen a doctor and dentist in the past year. More than a quarter of parents and students report that they have seen a mental health therapist in the past year. And you can see here, 6% of parents reported that their children doesn't, their child does not have health insurance. 17% have Medicaid and 9% have CHIP+. And then, 40% of parents believe there are not enough places to get healthcare. And then, you can see the percentage reporting student access to care up there in the top right corner. I won't go through all those. Percent of parents avoiding slash delaying care due to barriers. So, the barrier, lack of time and then the percent of surveyed parents avoiding delaying child healthcare. So, 32% mentioned lack of time, 33% mentioned cost and 10% mentioned, mentioned transportation. And then, this, these were questions around, for students, view the students' use of a school-based health center. So, how many of them would actually use it? The parent view for student use of the school-based health center and then staff support for it. So, you can see the percentages there. It looks like the last one didn't have the percentages on it, but the, the staff one was the larger one. Was, I think it is a good idea and I'm supportive. And then, you can see for parents, for definitely use, 24%, 32% said probably use and then 28% neutral and then 7% probably not and 9% definitely not. And then, for students, 11% said they would definitely use it, 23% said they probably would, 36% were neutral or don't know. And then, 20% said they probably wouldn't and then 10% said that they would not use it, definitely would not use it. School-based health center use and support. So, you can see with the answers here, these are, I believe, these were questions around whether or not they would access the school-based health center for these services. And I'm going to actually look back because I think Merillac maybe, is that what those questions were? It was whether or not they would actually utilize these? Okay, yeah, so you can see that on there.
Do we have something like this for what was actually used?
So, I have two documents that I can think of right now. The one is, it shows over the last three years, the amount of, the services that were utilized at the central clinic. So, we can pull that up if, if need. And then, we also have one that's a little bit more detailed that breaks down within those categories, like what were those services that students utilized? So, I can pull that up if the board, do you all want me to pause and pull that up now?
No, sorry, you can finish.
And then, pull that up, okay? Write that down so I don't forget. Okay. Common questions and concern, concerns for operations, it was around staffing, quality and experience, location, where and transportation, hours, operating hours, non-school days and hours. And then, services, what services are being offered, coordination with outside providers. And then, cost for parent involvement, communication, parent knowing child was seen or being present, confidentiality, child receiving care without parent knowledge, understanding who has access to medical records and creating space where kids can receive services confidentially. And then, for funding, the cost to operate, how it will be funded, not wanting education dollars shifted to healthcare. And then, sustainability, close if not funded long-term, options to fund long-term. So, those were some of the questions and concerns that came out of those surveys and then the meetings, I think, with the focus groups. Recommendations from the group was that community input indicates ample support to pursue a school-based health center in the district. Mental health and substance use are a clear priority area. To develop a communication plan to reach stakeholders. And then, school-based health center operational policies and procedures can address feedback from staff, students and parents and address potential concerns. So, again, this was back in 2018, these were the recommendations that were made. And that's the last slide on that one. So, let me pull up, unless anybody has questions about this one before I close it. Two. Oh, let me go back. So, I can try to answer these the best I can. So, so staffing, yeah, maybe Merillac might want to help chime in if I mess this up. But staffing is all, they're, they're, the folks that work within the school-based health center at Central currently are not D-51 staff, they're staff, staffed by Merillac and that's funded through Merillac. So, we're not actually spending D-51 funds on that location. Obviously, at this point, we have a central high school, school-based health center. I think based on the, the documents that I've shared that we found and then also just, you know, conversations that have happened over the years that the assumption was, was that the next location would be Grand Junction High School. My understanding is that actually Grand Junction High School was identified as the number one for need. But, at the time, there was a concern about putting money into the infrastructure of that building, knowing that it needed to be rebuilt at some point. So, Central became the, the target. So, operating hours is during school hours. And again, it's not open to, it's not open to the public. I don't have the exact hours, so Merillac could possibly provide that for us. And then, we do have a list of services, I can pull that slide up and go through all the services there. Like I said, cost, all the equipment at Central High School, the staffing, everything is done by Merillac. I think the only thing that we provide would possibly be custodial when they're cleaning the whole building, but I could even be wrong about that. And then, and then obviously, if it's part of the building, there's some energy costs, but that's pretty minimal compared to the rest of the building. So, communication, parent knowing child was seen or being present. We have another slide that I can bring up that talks about legally, what services that parents have to be notified about and then what services that, that's not required over a certain age. So, we can pull that slide up because if I try to remember it by heart, I'll butcher it. And that goes into the confidentiality one as well. I kind of mentioned cost to operate, that there's grant funds that are paying for this through Merillac. And then, sustainability, the, the central one's been open, this is the third year, I believe it's been open at Central. Any other questions about this presentation before I close it out? Okay, let me pull up, I think to answer your questions, Dr. Schultes, I'll try to find the slide for, where the service is being offered currently. So, this was a document that was shared last time. And so, I'll pull this up and try to make it as visible as possible. I can, I can zoom in down here. It's fun when you extend your display and you can't see what you're doing. There we go. So, these were provided last board meeting, but these, these are the past three years, the, the main services that were being provided at Central High School. So, you can see in each year's column, you have two columns. One is the number of users that utilize that service and then the number of visits is the next, is next to it. So, the first year, you can see medical, 290 users and there were 613 visits. Behavioral health, 140 users with 441 visits and then dental, 36 users with 41 visits. And then, you can see that going on through the years. So, year three, you can see it's just through December of this, that's one semester's worth of visits at Central High School. And then.
When you have, when you have medical.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a breakdown, okay, what's medical, what's behavior, what's.
So.
You know what I'm saying?
I think that's this one, let me try to pull it up as well.
So, you look at that.
Sorry.
It's all right.
So, this was also provided to us and I will try to zoom in. Oh. So, this was a breakdown of visits, diagnosis recorded and services by program area from August 2020 to December. So, when you talk about behavioral health, this is the reasons for students visiting for behavioral health. Depression screenings being number one, stress, anxiety, depression, trauma, tobacco, grief, self-harm, addiction, eating disorders. And then, you asked about medic, oh gosh, you asked about medical in particular. I think I just messed that up.
Well, it was just breakdown of.
Oh, there it is.
So, this, these numbers are from the beginning of, of the clinic.
Opening.
December.
Yes. And so, those were the medical visits. The main one being nutrition and physical activity counseling, BMI, common cold or virus issues. And then, blood pressure management, sports, physicals, STI testing, reproductive health education, immunization counseling, injuries and so on and so forth. So, back to the, oh, and then you can see dental down here too. So, 75 dental, for dental screenings, 11 for tooth and jaw pain and then one for injection. So, back to this one, those, my, if I'm reading this right, those numbers are broken down in the other one I just showed. And you can see here just some other statistics. So, less than 1% of the visits are for reproductive health visits and then 36 to 40% are for behavioral health visits. They did a breakdown of, for the payer, for the visits. And then, here's a list of top diagnoses that were, that they've been seen for. So, depression, anxiety, stress at home, anger, social anxiety, relationship problems, family discord, PTSD, OCD, acute stress, panic attacks, substance dependency, eating disorders, vaping and nicotine, sports, physicals and then acute cough, sore throat, headache, COVID screening, concussion, cold and virus, routine screening, STI. And it, it looks like top diagnosis matches the 2018 needs assessment findings from student and parent staff comments, so.
You go back, scroll back. So, if you look at that, we have as many in the first six months of this year as we did almost first year, so it's getting more use.
Yeah.
Is that right?
If we're on track, we'd be down quite a bit from last year.
If, if that's true, yeah. And is there, when you, now go back, scroll up. So, when you see these, go a little further, the diagnosis, is there any, and I don't know how you'd even do it, so maybe it's a dumb question, but is there any outcomes like that these visits and interventions had?
Oh, like.
Or any customer satisfaction type things, you know, that, that it actually has been a bit, other than checking off, we've seen this and that. I don't know, that's, that's probably a hard one.
So, I can't answer that unless, unless.
That leads me to a question I actually have. Under the memorandum of understanding, under item 13, the, and this is the, the one we have with Central. So, this is, this is under, yeah, the obligations, oh, further agreements of the parties. Number 13 says the parties agree to design an annually and annually execute an evaluation of the school-based health clinic processes, students' health status and student health needs. It says both parties will identify, collect, analyze and share data necessary to perform the agreed-upon evaluation. Evaluation results will be used to improve the SBHC's efficiency effectiveness, utilization and financing in order to increase students' access to primary healthcare. So, I was just wondering, since we've had it open, if we have that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, because I'm not a part of that. So, the question is, has, did we create a, and did we design and annually execute an evaluation of the process, student health status, student health needs? So, I guess what's the, what does the evaluation process look like for the current services at Central High School?
Well, and this is an obligation of both parties. So, I'm just wondering where we hold on to this at the district level too. If you could come to the microphone too, you're all welcome to or they can send you up by yourself.
I can speak to that part of it.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Part of it is that we have a, an advisory, a community, it's called a community advisory committee or council that meets three to four times a year. And they have school representatives on it, Merillac representative, the health department is on it, private pediatrician, so there's other folks that are on it. And so, that agenda includes reviewing, kind of a dashboard, kind of like what you're doing, what services, users, what utilization data, anything that's coming up. And that's usually discussed there, any, you know, suggestions that they may make from the committee or the council standpoint. And then, the principal at Central last year did a survey, a youth survey. And one of the questions on their youth survey included questions around the school-based health center. So, he has all of that data and he did present that at one of the council meetings and talked about it, what the results, what the students were saying about it, having that available to them, the benefits, the use of it, things like that. So, he has that survey. He said at that time, his plan was to do an annual survey.
Can I ask who in the district is responsible for upholding our portion of that, part of the agreement? You know, making sure that district, that we're participating in that.
Well, it sounds like the principal's a part of that advisory committee, so.
So, going back to, if you look under the obligations of the district under the memorandum of understanding, number four says it's to designate the school principal as the liaison between the school personnel and SBH, excuse me, SBHC personnel in planning and problem-solving issues, around issues concerning the SBHC. The principal will assist medical sponsor and, and medical sponsors referring to who's running the clinic in developing an annual budget for the operations and to include the value of in-kind support from the district. But, I don't know if that's also implying that the principal is then the one responsible for collecting that data. I think in addition to student data, are we also collecting data from the parents via a survey of what they? I mean, that's really kind of what I'm wondering is what, what our parents are feeling as far as, and what value they're, they're seeing with, with the clinic, with their students getting that healthcare? So, is your understanding, well, is your understanding only that it was a student survey that the principal conducted?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Also, on, on the advisory committee, I do have one question. Yeah, under further agreements of the parties, it says, this is under number one. So, the parties will jointly sponsor a community advisory committee made up of representatives of each party to this memorandum of understanding, representatives of the community at large and the school-based health users, parents and students. So, do you also have parents and students on that?
There is a parent and, and a student.
Okay, thank you.
And I can get more clarity on the other question and get back to the board.
Yeah, so I think we're going to need, if we can get the survey from Lance on what that information was and then if we could get, and then just clarify whether that was students only. And I think moving forward, I'd like to also have parental. Um, and I think moving forward, I'd like to also have parental input or, or parents to be surveyed on that as well. Um, just while we're thinking of it.
So the other one that before, so do you, I can go off of this and, because the other question that was raised was around services and parental consent. So I can go to that one unless y'all, there's other questions about this document before I pull it down. Um, so let me find that one real quick. My, there was a, uh, presentation that was given actually to this board, um, about a year ago. And so let me pull that one up because I know it had a slide in there that talked about, um, the, here it is. Uh, there we go. Um, so this was the presentation that was given to the board, uh, last March. And there is a slide in here that mentions, um, uh, had a breakdown of, there it is. So this, um, is under Colorado state law, minors are able to consent to several types of medical treatment. And you can see on the left column, the types of treatment and then, um, at what age, um, is there consent? So I'll leave that there. If there were questions about that.
Um, do I have it right though, that students, um, that there has to be a parental consent for students to use the clinic?
It's part of their registration packet when a parent signs it, if they are consenting.
Okay, so just, I just want to repeat that for anybody who might be listening. So it is in the registration packet for students when they pick it up for parents to consent to the student accessing the health clinic, so.
I'll clarify, we, we send those from DocuSign directly to the parents.
Okay, and they're sent directly from DocuSign to parents. Okay.
So if you don't have that signature, then the student can't access the clinic, is that right? For anything.
For anything, at all.
I'm just asking. I believe so.
Or they'll try to get verbal consent, so if there's some urgent issue, they usually, what they've told us, our providers, is they engage, they work so closely with the school nurse. Because that's a process. Most of the kids go through the nurse first.
Sure.
And then she directs them or brings them over to the house. So that they engage with the school nurse to be able to help with getting verbal consent. If they don't have it, there's an urgent issue, an injury, something like that. And they'll work with the school nurse to get the verbal consent, try to call the parent, you know, on the phone, talk to them.
So to be clear, to, to ask, for a student to access the clinic, there's either verbal or written consent by the parent?
Depending on what the service is, if they say they're coming in for a behavioral health visit, then it follows this.
Right, so the clinic, the clinic, per my understanding is, I mean, because state law is gonna trump any policy or procedure that we would have because this is law. So if it's, if, if a student doesn't have to have parental permission to access that service, they could, they could go to any clinic. Not just the clinic that's in the high school. They could, they, they could take a bus and go to any clinic and access those services without parental knowledge or consent. Is that, that's the, as the law is, I understand it. Okay.
There might be a registration process that answers the easy registration.
Okay, so there could be a registration process. Dr. Hill, were you able to get the other information that I had requested?
That was that other one that I just showed.
Okay, because for some reason I'm not, I can't pull it up.
That's this one. So it's got the breakdown.
So I had, um, requested from our last workshop, I had reached out to Marilac, um, to see kind of the exhaustive list of services, or, or that, what they're required to do per their grant funding, um, and wanted to kind of specifically see some of that. So they were very gracious to, um, put that information together and get it over to us, so. Um, I know it's sometimes, I don't mind PowerPoints, but sometimes I like seeing the documents themselves with the information in it to be able to read and understand what, um, that information is. So that's what this information is.
It's in the other PowerPoint?
Aren't we talking about the required services?
No, I, I had emailed to ask what was specifically in the grant language of what you're required to provide. So I think you provided, yes, you provide. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for.
And is all that on a slide in that other presentation?
It's, I don't know how many pages long that is, but that's the exhibit from the state, C D P H in Colorado. It kind of breaks down what is that expectation, statement of work for receiving funding to support your students.
Okay.
Remember, this one was in one of the presentations, services required by C D, uh, P H E and high school-based health center. So those are, that was in that other presentation.
It's the same.
Yeah.
So I think one question we could, so reproduction, health, education and services. Um, what, what is encompassed under that? Or is, is that detailed more in the, the information that was given to us? I think some of our parents, I mean, I'm guessing this could potentially be STDs, um, uh, maybe birth control. Um, I don't, I don't know what, what falls underneath that category. I mean, that's been one of the, the points that I think parents were, had some questions on. And then also, I think vaccinations was the other one. Do we have a?
Looked at Marilac again on that. I'm not an expert on.
Well, or if somebody, if you guys don't have it, if you could email it to us, a list of what is under reproductive health, education and services. Thank you.
And I, and did the previous one say that that was less than 1% of the medical services provided?
Thank you for pointing out.
It's less than 1% of the medical services provided, is reproductive.
That was on this one, um, right up here.
And then there was a slide before that though, that appeared, that maybe there was more than that.
More than?
The 1%.
Well, that includes, I know what you're speaking to, that, that would include anything. If they even talked about it, did education, answered a question, they're recording that as part of the visit summary. So it's gonna capture that. So it's not like just an exam was done or just a prescription was done, but it was education also.
So is that the 1%?
I'm.
So those numbers are not gonna match exactly because diagnoses numbers, they're gonna record multiple like reasons they talked to a, you know, a patient. They're gonna report all of those reasons and that's what is grouped together so you can see, these are the types of visits or the diagnoses that were recorded in a visit.
So what is included in the 1%?
Those would be actual visits by a student for like, uh.
There would be birth control.
An exam, could be an exam, or it could be a prescription, um, for birth control, contraception.
Okay, thank you. Right, because a student could come in and ta, they might have a sore throat, um, ha, then want to talk about something reproductive health-wise. And yeah, and I understand in medical field, you guys have to record everything that you are having that discussion with. And so, so, but then they do delineate out if a particular exam service or medication is administered. So thank you for, um, delineating out that information.
Let me ask, and forgive me if I missed this, getting back because this is an issue with some folks. On the parent permission aspect, of all the, the users, right? You have those, say this year, as an example, 436 users. What percentage or do we have of the cumulative when you have that one brand that went from 2020 to now? What, what percentage of users use services that have, have not had parent permission? Do you have something like that? You see what I'm getting at?
That's a, that's a good question. And if you're relating back to reproductive.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just as a, as a whole, well, what, whatever requires, there are some things that, that don't require parent permission. There, there are some things there you said do, so that's off the table, we know they do. But the ones, yeah, the, uh, of the whole picture of, of users, how many, what, what percentage makes up they, they didn't have parent permission? You have some.
Majority are gonna be, any of those are gonna be.
So if you're asking for a hog rumble, we don't have that, but we could certainly get that.
Okay, only because it, it answers a question that we get inundated with and, and like the 1%, that, that's.
Right, so basically anything on the state, anything on that chart that a child can see, uh, you know, someone without parent permission. We just need those broken out by what services the clinic is providing and how, what percentage of that is, falls under that category. I'm sorry.
We can tell you on the medical side, it's 99% have.
Okay.
Okay, on the medical side, 99% have permission.
No health services shall be provided to the child under 18 by the medical sponsor subcontracting organization without prior written consent of medical services.
It's the BH1 that's, that's why we're hesitant because the BH1 has a lot more stipulations around.
Okay.
That's where we got to be.
It's only to get context of, is, is, as that comes up so we can answer with facts and not just what we think or what we hear somebody says it is. You just have science.
But also we can rest assured that no health services are being provided without parental consent. No medical services being, yeah, unless, except in the case of an, an emergency, a life-threatening emergency.
And even in the case of an emergency, we make every attempt to contact the guardian, the parents.
Okay.
We can't, we just take care of the emergency.
Great point.
But just to clarify what you requested, we're looking for total number of users, numbers who are getting services without minor consent and what are the reasons that they are not, uh, that they had a visit under minor consent. I assume that's the data you wanted.
I think that's it.
Right there.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's just to have a better understanding of this, how widespread is it? I, I think there's a notion among some that it's just, I could go in and get anything done and, well, no, but that's what people believe. Right, and we, we wanted, I wanted to dispel, if, if, if it is, can be dispelled, what, what actually is happening? So we have facts over perception or what people think. Because I don't know what, what that is, okay.
So one question I have, you're, and you guys are probably not gonna be able to answer it, but, and I, and I'm trying to figure out how to, um, find out more information on this. The school-based health clinics in other states, um, some are, some are going more, way further than I'm comfortable as, as a parent. And I know some of that is coming down from legislation, um, from those states. So, you know, we're, we're in this board role for a period of time. And obviously we've all even inherited problems and decisions that have been made from previous boards. And so I'm, the way I'm trying to approach this is not only thinking of what's gonna happen the next three or four years, but what ramifications, you know, good or bad, um, are there in, you know, 10 or 20 years down the road? Because I think we all know that there can be things that are presented at a certain day and age that you're saying, that you're like, this is good. I, I agree with these things. But then legislation changes, governors change, state house changes, state senate change, and then the rules start to change. And now all of a sudden, like I said, I think last time at the workshop, is once the toothpaste is out of the tube, you really can't, it's hard to get it back in. And so I, I really want to think long-term, what, what happens if things change in the state of Colorado to, you know, the further, I guess undermining of parental rights with their kids? I mean, for instance, in California, I'm just gonna say it, they can get gender-affirming care. And I'm not saying that I'm for or against it. What I'm saying is the parent needs to be involved in the discussion. Doesn't matter what my personal belief is around it. The role of the school board is to make sure that we are team members with parents, students and our staff. And so parents are getting frustrated because they feel like their decision-making processes or, or just the decisions they want to make for their kids are then getting undermined because a student may have a thought about wanting to change their gender.
Can I just say really quickly, California law requires parent or guardian consent per, for gender-affirming care for minors. They cannot do that without, um, parental consent.
Right, well, that's great. That, that's helpful. I just want to make sure that we are not getting ourselves into the situations where we hear some of these other clinics, you know, coming about, doing things like that. So, and I need to get some more information because I've, have on good authority, students getting that without parental consent. I think that's more, probably more of a staff administration issue probably in some of those districts rather than it being the state law, so.
Just to, um, in agreement with, with what you said, I'm not so concerned about what the rules are today, but I am concerned about where the rules may go. And it may not even be 10 years down the road. It could be next year. It could be very, it could move quickly. And so that, that's also a hesitation that I have with having another entity inside our school.
I just, you know, I, I just, I want the board to express whatever concerns or thoughts they have, but I just, you know, and I'm, and I'm still sifting through all this information and this data, but I'm, I'm looking at this being, I'm playing the long game here on what this could look like down the road, you know, for our students and for our parents and our community. Um, I think there's a lot of good things that come from it and then there's just other things that I, I need to get sorted out, um, around that. And looking at, is there possibilities for helping more of our students with mental health needs rather than there being one clinic in one school? Um, you know, is there ways that, I, I'm more concerned, or really concerned that children at our middle school level and even our upper elementary, like fourth and fifth grade levels that are dysregulated and they're, you know, what help are we able to give them before they get to high school so they know how to function and work through behavior and mental health issues? I, I, I would like to just see if there's a way that this conversation could become bigger to help more of our students with the areas that are, that are highly impacted. Um, you know, because I, we know that the mental and behavioral health is, is a huge concern just from what we hear from our teachers um, and, and from what we hear from students as well. And we obviously see it in the numbers with, with the clinic. And so I just wonder if there's, if we need to think bigger rather than just one clinic in one school. Is there a way that is something that, that's maybe more mobile that could help, you know, students and their families? Um, I'd like to start, Will and I, um, well, I sit on the behavioral health, um, committee that the county puts on. And, you know, Mind Springs is on a good track. They're working through some good things with new leadership. And then Director Jones is gonna start going with me. But I just wonder if there's a way that we could just start looking at other opportunities to help, you know, help our students and families. So I'm just putting that more out there.
As we were looking, as we were, um, couple of meetings ago, Patty came in and, and did a presentation, you know, regarding what kind of staff we have to handle those kinds of issues. And it seemed pretty light to me. And we know that these problems don't start in high school. And we know that there are issues with our middle school students. And I, I agree, I think maybe something broader where we could move it around and go to wherever the need is the greatest. I think this was an idea that, that hatched based on what, what all was going on at the time. But maybe there is a way to, like you say, think broader, think bigger and, um, make it more accessible for those that, that want to use those services.
I think that that's a great idea and I think we should definitely explore that. I also don't see that as a reason to not move forward with this really great opportunity to serve, you know, over 1,000 or 2,000 students in their medical and behavioral health and dental needs each year. And again, you know, I know that the assessment was done in 2018, but I don't think anybody in this room thinks that needs have decreased since 2018. that needs have decreased since 2018.
Yeah, you know, it's, and I think, great points. And if you, you, we go back even to eighteen, it's, you know, what is the end goal for the district? What, why a clinic? Why, why do we do the things we do, right? Why do we provide busing? Why do we provide lunches for kids? Why do we do a lot of the things we do? It's to have a certain outcome, and that is academic success, you know, all, all those things with that. And that was the target of, of the clinic at Central and proposed at Junction. And it's, what, what is the old saying, good is the enemy of great, or something like that? Is, if, if there's, you, you don't want to miss opportunities to help, recognizing there may be other better ways to do it. But if you wait till you have the best, you'll, you will just never get anything done, and those services won't ever be rendered for kids or community. So it's, it's that balancing act of looking outside the box, like you said, are there, are there other avenues, other delivery systems to address this, not just through the district, but through the county and the city or cooperatively? But in the meantime, there are, the, the fires raging at our schools, right? At middle, we talked about middle schools and maybe upper elementary, and what are some strategies? What are some resources we have that, that could meet those needs? And so, you know, our decision, I look at it, the meaning, purpose of tonight is, okay, what, what is it that we're trying to decide upon? And, and it seems like we're trying to find, what are the resources that are available to our students to have good outcomes personally and, and success in their learning and success as being young people? And, um, and what is the most effective way of doing that? And, you know, a couple of years ago, the clinic was that, I don't think it was viewed as an end-all, that's going to fix everything, but it's a step in the right direction. So I, I'd hate to see us get lost in a weeds and look, what, what's going to, what can we do to continue that momentum? And yet, not to say that it's all done, and this is how it's going to be, because I think you're right. There's, there's other things we can look at, and, and how do we maximize, you know, the concern? How do, how do we address the concerns people have about, no, no one's out to undermine parents. It's never the goal here, like, you know, by the way, we want to undermine parent permission. That's, no one ever does that. It happens, I guess, right? But that's not the goal. So how do we, how do we minimize that or eliminate that and still provide the services that are needed? There can be a win-win all across the board, and so that's what we have to look for. Does that make sense?
When we, when Junction, when we agreed to build Junction, was this brought up in?
Oh, before, before that was ever on the bond, the, the, the plan at that time was, after the presentations, was the, the, the recognition that this is a, a, a useful tool to help our students at, at Central Junction. And, you know, you know, from a personal angle, I thought, why, how are our kids, is it Fruta or, or Palisade any different? They have those needs too, but it was a good starting point. That was the highest temperature at that point that needed to be addressed. But yeah, I think the, the plan from the previous board was, this, this, this would be a, a useful resource for our kids at Junction. You know, that's, that was four years ago. And to your point, it's, we don't, we've got to look long-term, and just because four years ago, that was determined. Maybe, maybe it isn't today. And we, it'd be interesting to hear more from the central community, not just the student survey, but parent survey and getting outcomes that everybody had hoped for. We know how many are getting services, but are, are we getting the outcomes we want to? Are people feeling, it's a good reflective point to see, is this really working the way we wanted it to work? And if not, how do we fix it? Or do we scrap it? Or do we say, this is, this is great, and let's continue? So, I think it needs constant evaluation of, as President Heitz mentioned in, in the memorandum of understanding, it is, that was supposed to be built in and, you know, for various reasons is maybe not there. Hope that all made sense.
I just, I think, personally, I think the communication just can be, can be better between all parties. I, I think that it tends to get lost with, with certain things and, and, you know, there's an understanding that, that our youth are getting, you know, abortions at the school, we're not telling the parents, or they're getting, you know, A, B, or C. But if we don't have that continued open dialogue, that the parents don't understand what's going on, we don't know what's going on, and it's kind of like, you know, then we're being sneaky, we're just trying to sneak this in. So I think that the communication is a lot better between all parties, that it definitely could help relieve a lot of that stress, a lot of that tension. And we also let the parents know that they're still, you know, they're still, just their childrens are still in charge, but we just need to figure out a better way of, of doing that, in my opinion.
No, I don't disagree with that at all. So, anyway, so I think the questions, you know, we've thrown some questions out that I think we still need answers to, to help decide, you know, what, what the future would look like at Junction or not.
I think that, so the, the clinic at Junction is not open to the public, correct? The clinic at Central is not open to the public, just students and staff, correct? So, um, okay, so that leads to, I think, facilities and FCI is, if, if the board or whatever, if, if the, if it changes from the clinic, what is, what is that going to look like cost-wise with that space that, it's almost fifteen hundred square feet? So there's been, I don't know, I, and maybe I've mis, misheard, but if we don't move forward with it being a clinic, what does that look like as far as expense or what? Do you have a question? No, go for it. Can one of you guys come up and? I know, I don't think it's volunteer, I think they're voluntold to come up.
I just want to, I just, can I, right before, I just, that just reminded me of a question that I had, like, just the framing of this to get to that question. So, this has been, this is a fascinating conversation. I love hearing about what all we've done and what has been done. And again, it sounds like there's, you know, five hundred to a thousand medical service appointments provided, five hundred to a thousand mental health service appointments, you know, dozens of dental appointments. I guess in my mind, and, and again, there's no medical services rendered without parental consent, except for in the case of an extreme emergency, like, I, I can't get, I, I can't wrap my head around all of that and getting to, to no clinic. You know, I, I can't sort why, how that would even be on the table right now.
Well, I think it's going to end up being a board decision. So I don't know which way the board would vote, so I, what I'm trying to do is just make sure that the board has all the information possible, because one little thing may, may influence the other. So, um, you know, I, I think it'd be foolish of us to just say it's okay to move forward with, without having have brought the community along in the conversation, especially with other things that we know we're going to have to ask the community for. So I just, I just, since, since a lot has happened and people are now kind of re-engaging, I think it's time to bring a lot of people, and a lot of people are interested in the school district, to bring them along in this conversation. So I don't know what the board will want to decide, so that's why I just want to put everything on the table, so to speak.
I think we're talking about two different things here with FCI and the contract. We're, we're looking at, we have space that was built into the budget for this project that was voted on and passed. And, and that, that space at the time of the bond election was visioned to be a clinic. Now, now, three years from now, five years from now, boards may decide, or schools may decide, we want it to be a bike, bike shop, or whatever it may be, right? But we want to make sure that, to honor what was initially approved for a clinic, that, that the infrastructure is there for that or whatever we want it to be down the road. That's, that's at least where I'm coming from, that we haven't taken the space away, right? For whatever we use it for, and that the infrastructure is there for, A, if, if we as a board vote to have a clinic, or we vote to have whatever we may have, you know, in that space.
And I think we can.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think we can rest assured that the space is available. It, we've, we've earmarked the space. We have, we had a discussion this last week, the, the drop dead date is really March first timeline. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
March first, we just need to know. So we can pour concrete and get everything else done in that space that we need to. To, to, to talk to the, um, question of, what do we do with the space if it's not a health clinic? There's been some other things that have been thrown out, habidashery, um, some kind of an area that, that people can come to, to get services for clothing, that kind of a thing. But right now, the space has been earmarked for the clinic. I mean, it's, that's what it shows on the drawings right now. I think that was, is that correct?
Yeah, the current space is a, a big box, basically. So that's what's currently in the, uh, contract, if you will. And then the, if you add the clinic, that would be added cost, um, to the project.
So that wasn't figured in the cost to begin with?
It's on the ad.
It's an add, okay.
It was, it was an add-all, yeah, yeah.
Could you, just, just for our community, could you, could somebody just explain what the add alternate or ad-halt is?
Yeah, so, um, uh, things like the clinic were, were easy things to price and put on a, we might do it later list. And so we, uh, we put it on an add alternate list, which we price it up, we have a full cost for it. And then, we identify things like that, that we can add at any point through the project, you know, you know, with minimal impact to us. And so, that's why we put it on that list, so that, so that this decision could be, you know, made, you know.
So by March first, you need to know, is it going to be a clinic or not a clinic? But, but let's say hypothetically, it's not a clinic. But then, five years from now, whatever may come, or they want it to be a clinic. What I'm suggesting, would it be easy to transfer that, or would it be?
Pretty easy, yeah, no, pretty easy, because we're, we are stubbing in the plumbing, the underground plumbing, so that if it ever turns into a clinic, it'd be some pretty easy concrete cuts and put the plumbing where you need it, and add walls, and divide the space up into, into whatever you need. So it's, it's.
Well, it sounds like the space can be, o, over the decades, that building's going to be in place. Will have flexibility to be used, whatever.
The infrastructure will be in place to do whatever we need to in the space. I will add, though, that there obviously is a cost to renovating a space. So whatever that is, um, health clinic or classroom or whatever it is, there's a cost associated with that.
So the cost isn't specific to the health clinic, it would be, no matter what we make?
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Right now, it's just a box.
It's just a box, right, right. Yeah, so there's no extra money being spent, um, to, you know, to make it a box or to make it, you know, it won't cost any more to make it a clinic if the decision's made in a timely fashion, or there will be no, there's no premium to that added. So this decision being made now has, has no impact cost-wise, it's just, it's just a straight one-for-one, that's what it costs.
Perfect, thank you. That was, I think that was one of the questions I had, was, you know, are, are we making a significant change? I think there was questions whether it was original plan or add-alternate. So I, I do appreciate the clarification as far as that goes. And then, um, yeah, and then kind of just knowing if, if this ends up becoming a board vote or decision, you know, what timeframe does the board have to kind of make, make those decisions concerning that?
Mark, do you remember what the cost was on the add-all list?
I knew you were going to ask.
I knew, I should have, I should have brought.
For the furnishings, for the furnishings and furnishing was two forty.
That sounds, that sounds right, yeah, yeah.
I didn't dare.
But even our MOU with Central put Merlak in charge of that. So while it was aspirational to have it in there, I think, makes sense that it's, that it was an add-all and that it's not.
Right, we want to make sure we got the design correct, right? You don't want to build it and then not, you know, fit the needs, if that's what it ends up being. So, basically, we're in a very good spot right now.
So, I mean, so that leads to another question I'm going to have, and maybe other parents have, is, I mean, that's almost fifteen hundred square feet in, inside of a school, that we're very much changing up how that school is going to run because our teachers there don't actually have dedicated classrooms. So then, it, you know, question I have is, um, what, you know, what if all of a sudden, we, we need space in that school for educators or something else that comes up, but then we don't have it? Because I mean, again, this is all in theory, and I know there's other schools that run this way, but it just makes me think, do you just wait? Because you don't know whether, what you'd need that space for, which I know we may not have that luxury. But it just, these are the questions that then kind of end up popping up in my mind, because Junction's going to run very differently than we've ever had before, like, any other school before. So, I mean, I know it'll be maybe like a college campus where, you know, you're going to different classrooms, but I don't know, these, they're just concerns or questions that I have on kind of operations too.
So that sounds like it's a, like a, was the building designed properly question?
Well, no, I just, I just wonder, you know, since our, I believe there, if I remember how the plans look, there will be spaces for teachers to basically land. They can do, sit down, do planning, or have spaces where the teachers will be at. But because they don't have dedicated classrooms where they'll be having, you know, all their items set up, like it's, you know, their space, I just wonder, you know, would the school need about fifteen hundred square feet for something that is unforeseeable to us? I, I don't even know what, what issues could arise.
So Andrew, that question did come up.
Did it?
They did pose that question at an OIC meeting, at a couple of the meetings. And the principal there indicated that they could definitely use the space, was, I believe, an exact quote. We could, we could definitely use the space.
Okay.
So, you know, we can, we can dig into that a little bit more if we need to, or, or whatnot.
I guess I just, you know, I just want to know what, what the options are, and what, and maybe what other people are, you know, seeing it through, you know, people who are going to be in that building, you know, day in and day out, and maybe what constraints they already feel that they have. So I, I would love that feedback of what, what they, they might foresee being a challenge with it changing up. So, I don't know, I just, I do want to make sure that we're, I don't want to drag our feet on it because we do need to be able to make decisions moving forward that would not end up costing, you know, the district.
You know, just, just in response to that, is the original, and I'm just going back to the previous board, when, when the original design came out, and this is my recollection, you can ask previous board members, but that space was not in the original design and all the, you know, there were a lot of meetings about how the building should be designed and laid out, and space needed for this, this, and that, right? And, and so that gets back to Carrie's question about, you know, are we looking, was the original design not done properly? This space was added, was an add-on purposely. We went back and said, you know, that, that previous were desired to have that space earmarked for a clinic. And that was added then on to the ask of the community in the bond election. So, you know, from where I sit, I, I kind of looked, again, things have changed, but that was the intent of that add-on and the extra dollars that we added on to the ask of the community was for that clinic.
So, did we add total space to the building, the size of the footprint?
Yes.
Got larger? Just to add the clinic, it wasn't an interior moving around?
No.
We actually made the building larger to accommodate, to make sure we could accommodate a clinic.
Yes.
Was the clinic specified in the bond language, or was just?
It's, it wasn't specified in the bond language, we've looked.
That, the.
It may have been the intention, but it was not in the bond language, so therefore, it's not a requirement. We have, we have a decision to make.
I mean, I would say that, you know, yeah, I mean, it's not like the stairwell was in the bond language. You know, like, specific build, specific rooms would not.
But, and to the point, Angela, but, listen, as, as a building principal, you can always have more space, right? So if, if, if we as a board decide, or five years from now decide, or ten years, you know, want to change anything in a building and the use of it, that space can be used for something different, right? And, and, because you're, you're, you can always have more space. The reason the space was finally determined what it was, I remember, we had to cut out, if you remember, tens of thousands of square feet from the original design of that building because of cost. And we wanted to have it under a certain, and that, that transmitted into cutting square footage, right? From the original aspirational goal, what we wanted the building to be like. All my point is, is that, it doesn't surprise me. it doesn't surprise me a building principal to say, yeah, I can always use that space. Anyone could use that space. Our, our, our decision isn't based on what a particular principal feels they could use that space. It's determined, do we feel a clinic, a health clinic, will benefit the needs of our students? Whatever space is used, right? If you bring in a modular or whatever you wanna bring in, that, that, it's, you're des- designed to help our students perform better in their school and be successful. So, does that make sense? Like, you know? And, and I'm not arguing any point one way or the other. I just, I, I think the space is there, that's kind of what we wanna make sure that it's there for whatever it's used for.
Just to clean up on the square foot space.
Sure.
For clarity, and, and as, there was a target square foot space. That square footage, through design, it happens a lot. It, it just grows. And then it was reduced back to the target square foot space. So, so what was originally planned square footage is what we have. So, um.
I thought on the plan it said like, it was like fourteen hundred, I mean, I, I literally, the plan that we were sent, whatever's on there is just, it's under, just under fifteen hundred square feet.
What's the total square foot? I think it was two forty-nine, two forty-two.
Two forty-nine, I think.
But I remember it started out close to two seventy. When we first started, it was about two seventy. Eddie, do you remember that? Pardon me?
It was two fifty-nine, I think. And we ended, we ended up being, we ended up with a target that, that through design, it grew and then we got it back to where the target was. So, so from the very beginning, we're right, yeah.
To meet what was, what we wanted to ask.
Right. Right, just for, for clarity.
Thank you.
And Mariah does confirm that that space was added specifically for the health clinic.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess my only concern is, and I voted for Grand Junction High School. And I think, I think establishing a clinic in a high school is different than saying we're gonna have stairwells in a high school. I mean, I understand that we don't, you don't tell the voters every little thing, but something like, I mean, we had lots of discussions around a balcony, we've had lots of discussions around gyms. We have a lot of discussion around this auxiliary gym that we decided to keep, which that'll be another discussion down the road. I think, I think it, I, it bothers me actually that if we did not make that clear to the voters.
Clear.
I mean, that, that is, that is just
Sure.
kind of why I'm advocating so much to bring the community along in the decision now because I don't want it to look like they got hoodwinked by, by the district. I feel like we're doing a really good job, this board and our staff and admin, to create a, a lot more trust that has been eroded away for lots of various reasons, right? It's just been contentious the last couple of years for everyone, everyone's lives have been turned upside down. And I just don't want there to, I don't want to take all that trust and erode it away because they think, well, it was just in there and that's just what we did. Because it frustrates me to think that a clinic was proposed, but I don't know how clear it was to the public. I mean, I, I did not know about that when I voted for it, so. I mean, and I'm not casting blame on anybody or what, or, or, and, and, and my responsibility was probably to ask the board at the time more questions, but that's what I'm just saying. It's, a clinic is different than a lot of other things when we're asking parents, you know, send your kids to school and trust them with us, with what we're doing. And I just, I just wanna make sure that we are still moving forward with, with that healing that we need in our community, with the trust between our community and, and, you know, the district. So, that's just, I, I, I just feel a lot of responsibility around that personally, so.
And I think moving forward, if, if this rendition of the Board of Education were to move into doing um, another building or anything that, that's that large a commitment and investment from our community, that I would want, those kinds of things very much specified at the risk of maybe not getting a bond passed, but to be very specific with the community and, and transparent with them.
I do wanna add that the board did pass a resolution about this as well. So like, it was, it was very.
I mean, with part of the bond language where it comes down to the vote.
Listen, and, and Will said this, we, we can never communicate enough, and obviously if, if one person didn't understand it, then we didn't communicate that enough. But when we did, when, when the clinic, and again, this is my recollection of everything, when we had the clinic at Central, it wa- it was clear, it was board discussion, public discussion, that, that the intent would be Junction would be the next school to have that. Now, in the bond, that, that wasn't, you know, that wasn't communicated as well as it could have been, as maybe other things should have been communicated too. But you're right, as, as we are today, right, that's history, you're absolutely right. Whatever we do, it, we, I don't wanna set up anybody for failure. The school, the staff, Merillak, the district, the future boards, um, people, and again, understand, not everyone's gonna buy into whatever we do, if we have one or not have one, but to be very thorough and transparent about, you know, if we do have it or don't have it, it's wha- what, what our reasoning and logic is behind that decision.
Director Jones, did you have something? Thank you, Clint, thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
In your, I know it's, you guys are ran by grants, right? It's funded by grants, is how you run, how you run the Merillak Clinic, right?
I'm billing.
And billing, yeah, there's quite a lot of Medicaid billing.
So then my question would be, is it just for, I mean, is, is it a way to open it up for families and students, or just, I mean, is it just student-based?
That is a choice of a planning and advisory committee. The advisory committee that planned for Central decided not to open it to the community. And it was one main reason is because there was no external access into the clinic. But there are school-based health centers, as Brian mentioned. So what they do in the summer, it all, all year round, they open it up for families, or they open it up to the community, they open it up to the rest of the school district. That call or that choice comes from the school district as to what you really want.
Like, I, I think a lot of that, I mean, a lot of the frustration is, I mean, it's great from August to June, but what happens in July when school's out and, and these students go home? You know, if they're not seniors, they're sophomores, freshmen, what happens then? Then you're stuck, you know, trying to find healthcare, or if it goes deeper than just, if it's a mental, mental health issue, you know, if it's just the son, but we don't know if he's having his health issues because he's having problems at home. So why not be able to extend those to the families at home, to be able to go and get counseling in the home, or have him come to the school and have a center? I mean, I would be more apt to be more comfortable if we opened it up to the families and it's not just an eight to five or a nine to four or whatever it is type of thing. Um, I just didn't know if that was the way it was set up, designed that way, or if it was a possibility to open it up to.
As a community health center for us, our vision is always to serve the entire population. So we are very open to that concept depending on the physical layout of the clinic, whether there's external access. And when the school is closed, I just wanted the school board to know that the kids have access to us all through the way. They may have to come to another facility because the school is closed, but we are always available.
That makes it more difficult for you to, with summertime. Okay.
So, just to clarify, since we didn't have any way to secure the, the rest of the building down for that to be, I think when I went to the one meeting for for the design of the new school, there is an exterior and interior entrance.
I think we all, I think we also need to consider school safety and the idea that we've got this thing locked down for a reason with, with not letting the public come in and use the, the school facility and not just have access to it. Um, I think we have to be really mindful about allow, I, I understand totally what you're saying, and I, I, I agree. When we're looking at behavioral stuff, how often do we really need to see more than just the, the student? We need to see family members with them or, or family members in addition. Um, but if we're allowing the public to just come in and use that as a separate kind of facility, that would, um, I would piggyback that on my suggestion that we maybe put a clinic very, very close and close proximity to a school, but not inside the school. And, and sort of muddy up those waters between what is school and what is the clinic?
Yeah, we had gotten a few emails around parental concern that, that they thought the clinics were open to the public and how were, how were people getting into the school and the school still staying safe? Which, that is not happening. We, we don't have public access to the clinic.
And now, what kind of, if, if we allow people access from the outside to come in, now, what kind of safety do we have between people gaining, gaining access from the outside into that space and they're, again, having access into the internal part of the school? That I think would be
Right, those would need.
pretty interesting logistics to get through, to make sure that the inside of our, that our school can remain safe and can be hardened if necessary.
So, Mark and Eddie, are, would that be, and again, we're talking step three hundred, we're talking step one, but is, is that something with the outside exit? You know, just like we do in our main building, there is, you know, an entrance way and a security vestibule and people check out who they are. Is that, would that still be a possibility? If, if that's how everybody decides to go to make, expand the, the reach, can that be done? Or was that thought of as, as?
At Junk, at Junction, can you do an exterior entrance that would be secure to the clinic?
Or was that considered in the design?
Thanks. Okay, so, just so people at home, it's not currently in the design, uh, it could be to obviously make it more robust, um, to be secure for, I think, what our requirements are for security.
Then we're gonna have to have security on the other end as well.
So, um, I kinda wanna just recap because I think we have some action items, right? Some things that I know the board needs follow-up information on. Um, so I, Merillak's gonna get us some, uh, some more additional information um, on some of those reproductive services, kind of what the, the list of those are. We wanted, uh, we wanted to know to what, I'm sorry, did somebody keep a list?
Well, this is what I wrote down. I wrote down, um, the survey results from the principal that were given to students. And then it sounds like possibly if there wasn't a parent survey, that the board might request that. But if we don't have that data right now, then that'd be something we'd have to get. So, but at least the data that the principal, um, received, and then I think there was a question around, um, like district level oversight, um, of the, what's going on at the clinic, so I can get clarification on that. But then I think there was a question from Merillak specifically around, um, the reproductive.
Yes, and then, um, Mr. Levinson had asked for the delineation of the services that are provided that do not require parental consent, um, just kind of what percentage that looked like. Because then obviously everything else requires parental consent. I think that information would be helpful. Board, is there any other questions or thoughts, comments that?
Well, I don't know if I, even if I have my thoughts clear on this, but what is it that each of us need to know to help make the decision? Because again, you know, we're, we're getting, we're getting influenced by others that, that we need to vote yea or nay on, you know, a clinic or no clinic. What, what is it that, um, we, we each need to, to learn about that can help solidify the decision and the rationale behind that decision? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I know for me, I need to go back and find where I found information. Uh, for instance, in California where parents were not being, um, uh, or parents were not giving their consent. And I need to find out for whether that was, um, a district or administrative issue. Because again, what I'm saying is I wanna get out ahead of something and think of a long-term game. Because if it's something that does move forward, then what do we need to do as a district to ensure that that doesn't happen here? Um, so I, I will do some investigating on my, I need that, I need that comfort level of knowing that we're always keeping the parent informed, um, on what our obligations are per state law. So, and if those laws were to change, what does that look like? So.
You know, I guess for me, and I brought up some, is, is that, for lack of another term, that customer satisfaction information, you know, with all the interventions that have been done, have, have they borne the fruit we had hoped they would? With student performance, student wellness, those kinds of attendance, you know, just the things, the outcomes that were the best hopes at the time at Central, I'm picking on Central, I know there's other data places, you know, other schools that have it in our district. You know, have, have those outcomes been reached? That, that would be one. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good information.
So I think you can, we can get data on satisfaction from the services. I'm not sure you're gonna be able to pinpoint data that says because a school-based health center went in there in twenty twenty, especially through everything that's happened in the last couple of years, that attendance was changed or that academic performance has changed. Like, I'm just putting that out there. I don't think we're gonna be able to get you that. We can probably get, or we can get the feedback from Lance's survey that ideally would be, I don't know what those questions were, but it would be asking the families at the school or the students at the school, in this case, did they feel like that the services met their needs? We could get that, but you're not gonna get data that says.
And that's fine, that's fine. And I'm not, the other thing that occurred to me is, you know, get, I'm, I'm looking at what, what are the issues? I, I think, as, as I've listened to all, all of our board and, and many in the community, I think there's consensus that there are needs out there and probably even greater than the needs that were there four years ago. So if, if, if we go with that, and, and maybe not everybody feels that way, but I, I sense that we, we have a baseline that we agree with that. That none of us are saying that we don't wanna provide a service. We're, we're questioning maybe is this the most effective and efficient and service that we can provide? With some of the caveats that are frustrating for people, the parent permission thing perhaps, or the cost, which we have minimal cost with, and I know. But to, to explore what, what would be some other options, one, one came up. I know we have to follow the state law, I guess, but are there, I mean, Tammy's not here, but are there, are there ways around that to still provide? I hate to throw out everything because of one thing that may not sit well with people, right? You hate to throw out everything, baby with a bathwater, when, you know, most of it's working or is effective. And are there go-arounds to get, for example, I'm not saying this is a major one, the, the parent permission thing, right? That, that, to, to get a service that we.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, sure.
Parent permission is required for every medical service, and there's not, that's, that's, that's period. There's some behavioral health services that they're figuring out what is, what hasn't had.
Is that ac- that's accurate, right, or not?
You know, we've gotta also think about, you know, Andrew uses the analogy of putting the tooth, toothpaste back in the tube. Today, they're doing that, but will, not, not only will they have to, but will they be able to?
It's in our memorandum of understanding, so we can put that in a memorandum of understanding.
And that's gonna trump if state law changes.
That's a great question. I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah.
But that can be part of our, you know, and we can put in our memorandum of understanding is that like, if things change in a way that invalidates the memorandum of understanding, it needs to be revisited.
Andrea and I had a meeting with, I think all of you guys were there, a few, several months ago. I think, I think it was warm. And you had mentioned that, correct me where I may be paraphrasing a little bit too much, that under the conditions of your grant and, I believe, state law, that we really couldn't pick and choose which services you would offer. It had to be everything that was in that, in the grant language or under, or, or maybe it was also CDPHG. That was the, the, maybe the health, the state health department, about what they required a school-based. Mm-hmm. So. No, 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 okay, go ahead. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So. No, 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 no. Okay, go ahead. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So that just brings another question of mine that, that I brought it up at the last meeting, but I'm going to do it again tonight. I'm a big proponent of choice, whether it's parental choice, choice in healthcare, choice in services. And so with the referring, we're, it sort of feels like we're putting all of our eggs into one basket. I don't know how it all came to be that, that it's, Merillac is an organization. But in those referrals, I, I like the idea of giving parents and students a choice in saying, you could go here, or you could go here for these kinds of services. I think when it comes down to, to healthcare services, I like the idea that, that people have choice. So again, if we were to do a referral process or something like that, I think we'd have to get really specific about how that would happen.
Okay, what were you going to, did you have an example that you were going to share? What, what did that look like?
So you don't deny the service. You're, you're saying we, we can't, again, hypothetical, we, we can't provide that here, but you can get it.
I would be curious for things like that if we're starting to, you know, do à la carte services. I would want to understand, you know, does that, do we have any information about that specifically impacting teen pregnancy rates if they, you know, don't have those services on site or whatever?
Just do it in the mic so that it's for the public.
Just quickly, when you talked about choice, Ed, yes, that's important to us too. And, and the whole model of school-based health centers is not to take away care by their primary care physician or somewhere where they're already established. That's not the point of it. The point is to be able to almost like be a, an arm or a support of that. And that's why we had physicians and pediatricians on our planning committee so that that was understood. And it was part of the FAQ that I think is even still posted, you know, on the schools, healthy schools website, that we, we helped coordinate the care. So if you came in or your child came in, had something acute right then that we could take care of, it's not to say we're going to take over your care now forever. We're going to say, follow up with your primary care physician. Or if it's a chronic condition, follow up with your chronic care, or with your primary care physician. It's helpful for those families that don't have access to care, uninsured families, maybe have never had a medical home or a dental home, that we can be an option for them. So it's, it's there for them if they want to make it their medical home. But it's not to replace their primary care physician. It's to be a, an arm, an extension, a support of that.
Thank you.
Dr. Hill, could you bring up a slide again? It's cutting off on mine of just what is the minor consent at what age? So because the questions I have around this is, you know, you've got outpatient mental health services. And I know, so the minor can consent to that. They want care for that also for if they're a victim of sexual abuse. And then substance abuse disorder, I don't know, it kind of cuts, yeah, and then, yeah. So I guess my question is, is, you know, and I appreciate Dr. Schulte's making sure we're staying clear on what parents are getting consent on. But I mean, if there's, I just, I get concerned, you know, are, can you only tell the parent if the minor tells you that if they're having a mental health issue, if they don't want the parent to be told, or substance abuse? Because I guess then I wonder, are the families getting engaged in helping the student through this crisis? I mean, I understand some families are why kids have the crisis. But what, what is happening if, like, you know, being a parent, I would want to be able to come in and help support my child if there was this issue. And granted that, you know, being a, a mother of teenagers, they don't always want to tell you everything. So I appreciate that they have friends or other people they can talk to. But, but then it just concerns me from the parent standpoint, like, how then are we, how can the parent then support their child? So am I, can only a parent know that a child access that if the child gives the healthcare provider permission to disclose it to the parents? Okay, that would, I mean, that's my understanding is that. Right, that's, that's for any healthcare provider. That's not just Merillac. I'm, I appreciate you guys answering our questions. And I don't, I don't want people to think we're just, I'm picking on Merillac, but I'm, I just want an understanding of the Colorado law.
So the, so the parent may give a general, sign a, a general consent form saying, yeah, if my kid needs to do whatever at the healthcare clinic, that's fine. But if, you know, if the, if the parent is thinking, well, they would use it for maybe the, the sports physical or, or one of those things. But really, the student ends up using it for one of the other things, the parent would not know that they came in. Thank you. The student's right to decide whether or not the parent would be brought into the conversation. Got it. Right, right. Thank you.
You, you have to adhere to the law. And, and just for those who might not have heard, Merillac says that they very strongly encourage the students to speak to their families about it. But again, by law. So, you know, I don't agree with the law. I'm just going to say personally as a parent, I don't like it. But, you know, it, it is the law. So that does kind of tie the hands of physicians, obviously puts, you know, the school district, we, we don't control that part of it, nor does Merillac control that part of it. So I think it's just a matter of how do we navigate through some of these things to make sure that as far as it's up to us, we, we do keep parents at the center of that. And I do appreciate that you guys are advocating and telling, telling students to do that. If any, if any of these require medication though, to treat an infection, those can be administered then to the student if it's like a sexually transmitted infection? Okay, you don't dispense of those. Okay. Okay. But that, that is one, I think, just for clarity, a student can get a medication without parental consent because it falls under this minor consent. Right. Right. What I'm, what I just want to clarify is that some of these do actually require a medical treatment, like a, a medication. Okay, right. I'm not saying whether, you know, we're not saying that all medical services require parental consent because there are these that are minor consent and a medication or a treatment could accompany whatever that need, or whatever needs to be done for the student, correct? Okay, you don't stock them, you don't dispense them. You write the, the script for them and the student then goes and seeks out attaining. Just like when I go to my doctor. Yeah, exactly. Yep, no, understood. I just want to, I just am trying to bring clarity. I know a lot of, well, at least before becoming a school board member, it was a lot of understanding from the parental view that the school board doesn't have any say in this because this is state law when it's, you know, when it comes to this age with your, the children. So I just. Well, right, no, because the law, the law will always, I mean, my understanding is the law is always going to trump a policy, a procedure, or an MOU. And we can ask Tammy that, but it's, it's the law. So I don't see how you could.
I would like her to answer that for everybody. I did talk to her about that, and I believe you're correct.
Okay, well, yeah.
But I, I would like Tammy.
I'm not an attorney, but we'll.
I'd like Tammy to just give that answer.
Board, was there any other items on our list that we wanted to investigate? So, okay. Well, personally, I have some things I want to look at. Obviously, we'll then see what we can get from the principal. Merillac will get us a couple different data, inform, or data points. And then if, I guess if, Board, if you think of anything else, we can email those so that we can get the information and.
So is it planned next meeting, or is that too tight a time?
I don't know because our next meeting is Tuesday. We have a pretty packed agenda with our business meeting. So potentially, yeah, the work session, if, if needs be, or if we have to do something before that. If we're able to get the information for the meeting on Tuesday, we could see if it wouldn't take long to present that, to make sure that the board can have that information. So if we have it, I'd say we could probably add that.
We have time to.
I don't know that we're taking, yeah, I wouldn't say, unless the board is ready, I wouldn't, if, if this is looking like it needs to be a vote, I don't know, I don't know that I'd feel personally ready by Tuesday to make a, a vote on it. So I want to make sure everybody feels like they've had time to digest the information before doing any kind of vote. So it could be discussion items on Tuesday, but no vote.
If we could get the information, say by the, the end of the month, then we could have a vote then following in February. You're right, you want to sit on that information and see if it prompts new questions?
Yeah.
Well, and we want adequate time for our, our community to reach out as well.
Correct. Any other? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for Merillac and our other staff that came out and FCI to answer our questions. Thank you, community members for coming. If you need to catch any of us afterwards, if you want to relay any questions, or you're welcome to email us as well, as we're taking in all that feedback during this time. Thank you, everyone.